Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting's order. Please have a good evening, please. Okay, next, I'd like to start with Mel Cole. Start, thank you.
Brandon, I'd call Chief of Police.
Owen Heinz, Arrow Engineer.
Let's open the record, we're hearing service.
Dave Chris, Director of Finances.
Jeff Warner, Assistant Director.
Bob Hart, Township Manager.
Supervisor Dennis DeSanto.
Supervisor Joel Wider.
Supervisor Kevin McDevitt.
Chair of the Vanis, Vice Chairman.
Ashley Duro, Chairwoman. I'd like to start with a moment of silence, please, for a brief Eastern Township before you get passed away. Billis McQuerns, she's been a long-term resident. She served on the vacancy board from 2010 to 2015. Margaret Joro, Peggy Smithel, she's been a long-time resident, worked at Eastern Township from 1987 to 2004. And Eunice Reader, longtime resident, worked at Eastern Township from 1962 to 1995. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. At this time, there's a presentation from Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board. We'd like to call you up to the podium, please.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I am, so as this is loading here, just to introduce myself, sorry, I'm just gonna adjust this. Can you guys hear me okay? Awesome. So, we are the Tourism Board of Montgomery County with the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board. If you go to the next slide, just a little bit about me. I'm Samantha Cole. I'm the Associate Director of Public Relations. And next slide. Our mission with the Tourism Board is inspiring the world to fall in love with Montgomery County, PA. And our vision is a must-experience destination rooted in the past and leading the future. For those who don't know, we are funded by the 4% hotel tax. So really what that means is every hotel room booked in Montgomery County, 4% of that goes right back to us so that we can promote and market Montgomery County to prospective visitors. Next slide, please. We are a membership-based organization. As you can see, we have several hundred members, and we're growing. And then Meg Talonson in the back here, who kindly joined me tonight. She heads up our membership, does an awesome job. We've both left our information with Margaret. So if you guys have any questions about membership or our organization, please feel free to reach out. Next slide, please. This is just an overview of some of the marketing opportunities within the Tourism Board, PR, social media efforts, digital marketing, co-op, like billboards and things like that. And then we also have an in-house creative agency, as well as our mascot, who likes to attend Township events and has attended East Norton events in the past. Next slide, please. Just a little bit about our brand. So you might be wondering why I'm gonna call the Valley Forge Tourism Convention Board not the Montgomery County Tourism Board. There are, I think it's 18 other Montgomery Counties in the United States. So we're leading with the internationally-recognized landmark that we do have here in the county. And this is just a little bit about our brand approach, our segmented brand approach, and the different interests that we use to get visitors to come out to Monco. So whether it's via shopping or dining, golf, breweries, wineries, and distilleries. This is kind of... I'm actually gonna... I'm just gonna turn that off. You guys can hear me okay, right? This is just our brand approach, and what we use, our social media approach as well. And then if you go to the next slide, this is just an example of a campaign that I was kind of thinking about you guys in this room. If you know any local-yo business or small business in East Norton or really across all of Montgomery County, we do have a campaign that is ongoing. It's called Make It Main Street, which really just supports the small businesses across Montgomery County. Digital, social media, PR, television. And you can see a little bit of how we promoted this in the past. We had affiliates behind complete advertisement, television, as I mentioned, and the drivable billboards. So if you guys know any small businesses that you would like to feature in this campaign, it is absolutely no cost to the business. We're always looking for them. We're going to continue this campaign throughout 2022 as well. So please feel free to send them our way. And then next slide, please. We also do have two apps. We want as more things to do in the county. And the other one is specifically focused on breweries, wineries, and distilleries. So again, if you guys know any businesses that we can update that might be beneficial to a prospective visitor that we can include in these apps, please feel free to send them our way. People are always looking for things to do. Same goes for our publications, too. So our Golf Guide, our Visitor's Guide, our Dining Guide, any restaurants, and an Arts Guide as well, we do have. Next slide. The next two slides are just two events that we introduced this year. This first one is Crave Monco Month. It's essentially a restaurant we booked. It was the entire month of July. Over 100 restaurants across the county participated. It was completely free for them to participate, and they got television, social, digital, PR promotion out of it. Again, we are going to keep this going for years to come, especially in 2022. We're looking to make this a lot bigger. So if you know any restaurants that might be interested, again, it's free for them to participate. And then same goes for the next slide, our Arts Monco Week. And that is a similar campaign, but it puts spotlight on the arts venues across Montgomery County. So if you know any arts venues, we are looking to promote them in the month of August. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank anybody in this room who did donate to our Freedom From Hunger campaign. This was an initiative that, over the years, we've looked to raise over 70,000 pounds of food to feed the hungry across Montgomery County. We did exceed our goal this year, and we are continuing this campaign through the holiday season because of the recent tornadoes in the summer. We're just looking to continue to support those families in Montgomery County. And then lastly, just follow us on social media. Feel free to tag us on social, too. We have over 172,000 followers. So we're always looking for new content to share. If you guys think anything is social-worthy, please feel free to share us, or you should use the hashtag #MakeItMonco, and we'll absolutely share that out to our following. And then that was it. So thank you so much for your time. I know you guys have a packed agenda, so we didn't want to take too much of your time. But as I mentioned, we did leave our cards over there with Margaret. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, I'd like to make the announcement that we met for executive session discussing the personnel and litigation. I'd also like to make a motion to approve last meeting's minutes. Do you have a second for that motion?
One second.
Second by Mr. Gavannes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Citizens to be heard. Comments by the Board of Supervisors? I just have one comment with the tree lady. I was only there very briefly, but it looked like a phenomenal event. I know Supervisor Gavannes and Deputy Supervisor Wider were there as well. Everybody was there. So I just want to commend everybody in Public Works, all those there that took the initiative and needed such a firm family event. Thank you. Any other comments on the board? Moving on to old business. Notice of intent to award 2021 Lickwood Fuels Road Program. I'd like to call Township Engineer, Mr. Owen Heinz. Do you have a second, please?
Yes, thank you very much. On November 16th, 2021, the township opened bids for the 2021 Lickwood Fuels Road Program. Total of six bids were received for the project, ranging from $714,510 to $1,730,760. Army reviewed the bids and found discrepancies in the apparent low bidder. Attorney Paulen Sons, that's TDS. Several missing documents, and then this matter was brought before the Township Solicitor. Ultimately, Remington found no discrepancies in the bid submitted by the second lowest bidder, Miko Constructors. And therefore, we recommend that the Board of Supervisors authorize the Township Engineers' Office to issue a notice of intent to award to Miko Constructors the total bid loss of $729,505. Final warning, the contract is contingent on a successful outcome of the required responsible contractor review and determination of who performed by our office.
Questions on the board? Owen, on the board?
Hi, everybody. I'd like to make a motion to... Make a motion for the notice of intent to award 2021 Lickwood Fuels Road Program. Do you have a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, second by Supervisor McDevitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Gavannes?
Order 595, Department of Township Police Pension Plan Amendment Number 6. I'd like to call on our Township Manager, Mr. Hart, to review this. Thank you, Vice Chair Gavannes. Is there a call on the last meeting? The Board voted to advertise this pension plan amendment. This particular amendment deals with the police pension plan, and it was part of our last contract negotiations that part of the contract included a new clause where it was an early retirement option of 20 years and out, and without any of your retirement age. And accordingly, your pension payout would be deducted from that early retirement. But it gives officers who have been there 20 years and are looking to move on either, whether it's to another agency or another career, gives that opportunity to retire early and have the proper percentages deducted. So that is in their contract now. It was advertised, and it's before you tonight, just to wrap up this.
Any questions or comments from the board? I'd like to make a motion to approve Order 595, Eastern Township's Pension Plan Amendment Number 6. Do you have a second for that motion?
A second.
Second by Supervisor DeSanto. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Kevin?
Chair of the Board of Supervisors?
Resolution Number 2847, granting amended preliminary and final land development for 10 and 14 East German Town Pike. I'd like to call on Township Manager Hart to discuss the matter.
James, I think this is you.
I'd like to call Jim Sullivan to discuss this matter.
Thank you. I'm Mr. Hart.
Sorry.
Sorry.
No, those are your...
Yeah, Mr. Hart, you're correcting my mistake. This is the amended preliminary land development resolution for while. If you remember, the Board approved this back in either November, October of last year. And then there was some legal maneuvers made by all the parties involved, specifically for the access from the Calbike to the property. After many, many discussions and then agreements made, a settlement agreement has been agreed to, and I believe it's going to be signed by the Board in near future. The agreement is basically that the access will no longer be 20 feet wide, it'll be 24 feet wide, and therefore, a compact two-way tractor. Actually, the nuts and bolts of this particular resolution. All other items in the land development remain the same.
I apologize, that was going to be handled by our Solicitor, who happened to have a health issue this evening. And that's why it was a little...
Sorry, I was on...
No, it's... I apologize, but Jim Sullivan knows.
Okay, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments?
I'm Chair Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan, just to reiterate, this is pertaining to the taking it from 20 feet to 24 feet, that entryway.
Those correct, correct. Yes, I mean, thank you.
And for those who may not be aware completely, this is the raised iron property and the car wash next door that will be demolished. And a super wallaw. This has been going on here for a couple of years, but not that everyone is being a face to that through that whole process. But the car wash will go away, raised iron will go away, and it will be a super wallaw. Starting to be built very soon.
Thank you, Bruce. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I just have one. When we did this originally, and we approved it, this drawbridge became a real sticking point. It was a sticking point throughout the whole negotiations. And I'm glad to see it finally got resolved. And I think it was one of the things that this Board kind of stood up to say, no, this is the way it's going to be. And then they finally resolved it by making it quieter. So I think our Board did a great job of, you know, sticking firm, and yeah.
It would have been... You're absolutely correct. It would have been very easy to... At the end of the day, this was one last issue on a major development. And it would have been very easy to let it go. But the Board did, and you stand, stood strong because you weren't comfortable with having something 20-foot-wide, two-way tractor, when it needed to be 24. And I can tell you, many townsfolk were just weighing that. But it was important to this Board. We made it quite clear to them. And all the parties involved on the development side got them and made your suggestions and your demands happen. And I use that benefit as a project, but also to be able to get residents to come in and out and shop with us.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, I'd like to make a motion. For Resolution Number 2847, we're setting an amendment for preliminary private development for 10 and 14 East German Town Pike. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Supervisor McDevitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Supervisor McDevitt?
Okay, Eastern Township 2022 Budget Presentation. I would like to call on Financial Director, David Chris.
Thank you, Supervisor David. Well, we're pleased to present to you tonight the final 2022 fiscal year budget for Eastern Township. It's a budget that is comprised of 13 different funds that adds up to only $20,286,927. The proposed budget that's been put together after many, many months of discussion and compilation is realistic, practical, and conservative. And we believe balances the need to provide critical municipal services with our standard prudent fiscal constraints. The budget's a little bit higher than the prior year's budget, and also a little higher than the preliminary budget, but exclusively because of some recent grants that have been awarded to the Township. And we want to make sure we got those included into the budget. So they're part of this as well. We do also have, as part of the budget, our five-year capital improvement plan, which includes monies for stormwater remediation, LED lighting initiatives, park improvements, technology upgrades, different traffic control management initiatives. All totaling just roughly over $3.4 million. So, as I said, we have in front of you tonight for your approval is the budget for $20,286, and $20,286,927. It's been a long time putting the budget together, so sorry about that.
Questions or comments from the board?
If I can add for just a few items to this. First, I want to thank our Dave, Chris, and his team for putting in the hours and every little detail that goes along with putting this together. They did a great job, and I... Anybody can put numbers together on a page, but really putting it in perspective and real-world, what it means real-world, and their real-world perspectives, consequences that go with these numbers. The Board made it clear to us several years ago, this Board, that you wanted to invest in our infrastructure. Our infrastructure had been neglected over the years. The only way we made our Township a place where people want to raise their families and others want to come and bring their families and raise them and thrive is if we have those amenities and that infrastructure, that quality of life that is attractive to young families and the older generations as well. We've committed, this Board has committed to that for the last several years. And this budget, strong budget, but it also continues that commitment to make this, make the investment in our infrastructure and the amenities that really keeps Eastern Township on the cutting edge and moving forward as a place where families will want to come and raise their families and raise them and live their lives. So thank you for allowing us to do that as well, because it's not easy, and we want to make it. We want to put that vision and make that vision happen. And it takes a lot of work to get there. But thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Just to echo what you said, Mr. Hart. Thank you, and Chris, for all the hard work, the entirety, for your due diligence in being financially responsible for Eastern Township. I appreciate that as a resident of Eastern and as a board member, obviously as a resident. Thank you so much. I'd like to make a motion to approve Eastern Township's 2022 Budget Presentation. Do you have a second for that motion?
A second.
Okay, second by Supervisor DeSanto? I'm gonna get there.
Sure. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right. Supervisor McDevitt?
All right. Resolution Number 2848, adopt final budget and real estate tax rate for 2022. I'd like to call on our Highness Director, David Chris, to review this resolution.
Thank you, Supervisor McDevitt. In front of you are Resolution Number 2848, which essentially establishes the tax rate for the Township for the next fiscal year, which is a large part of our funding for next year's budget. And the long and short of the resolution you found on the last page, now therefore be it resolved that the Eastern Township Board of Supervisors hereby formally approves the 2022 budget with the total revenues of all funds of $20,286,927 and total expenditures of all funds of $20,286,927 and the 2022 real estate tax rate of 2.727 mils, which has been the tax rate that has been since 1... 2009 was the last time they raised. For the last many years. Glad to answer any questions.
We're all getting tons of... Listen. That was the year I was elected.
I can say $20 million subtracts 2021.
Haven't had that tax rate since I got elected.
All right. Any questions on how that came about?
Nope, I'm done.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2848, the adoption of the final budget and real estate tax for 2022. Do you have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Vice Chair, Mr. Gavannes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And moving on to escrow release number six, Bradbury Point. I'd like to call in Director of Engineering Services, Mr. Sullivan. Do you have a second, please?
Thank you. I am Chair Shapiro. This is escrow release number six for Bradbury Point Project. Based on recent inspection, we have been confirmed that all items in this request have been satisfied and yet completed. And therefore, recommend the Board of Supervisors authorize escrow release number six for Bradbury Point in the amount of $231,691.46.
Questions or comments from the board? I'd like to make a motion to approve escrow release number six, Bradbury Point. Do you have a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Supervisor McDevitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Supervisor McDevitt?
All right. Authorization to opt-in to National Lickwood Fuels Settlement. And since Alan's following on here, I assume Mr. Hart will take that.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hart. Really, what you stated is exactly it. There has been litigation and other litigation, additional litigation outside of this. But this litigation, national litigation about going forward issue with... This particular case is a settlement with four particular pharmaceutical companies. There will be a large cash settlement. And municipalities could go on their own and sue on their own. But our legal, our Solicitor's Office and honestly, most legal opinions in this situation say, opt-in. The work's been done. Over time, we will get a portion of the total settlement. So we don't know what that is yet, but we're at a point now where they can't figure it out till they know who's in and who's out. So I have, everyone I've heard help is opting in. It makes a lot of sense. Much of the work's been done. And whatever monies we get can be, we're going to have the opportunity to put them into programs and services that help people with substance abuse problems and recovery and all that surrounds that. So there's a great opportunity coming down the line to do some really good and much needed work at the local level. But this is the first step of opting in to be available for this one. So that's just a brief...
Questions or comments from the board? I'd like to make a motion to authorize to opt-in to the National Lickwood Settlement. Do you have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Second by Supervisor McDevitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Monthly expenditures from November 17, 2021 through December 13, 2021. I'd call on Superintendent Chris to review this, please.
Thank you, Chair Shapiro. Each month, we present our expenditures for the Board in Review and Approval from the day of the last meeting to the date of the present meeting. From November 17 through December 13, 2021, our accounts payable expenditures were $205,535.09. And our payroll expenditures for the same period, time period, were $318,173.95. So our total outlay during that period of time was $523,709.04. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions or comments from the board? I'd like to make a motion to approve monthly expenditures from November 17, 2021 through December 13, 2021. Do you have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, second by Supervisor McDevitt. All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Other business? Manager's okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As this being our last, our last meeting of the year, just wanted to take a minute or two, not too long, but just to go over a few last, end of the year things. I think we had a fantastic year, considering we've been in the midst of this pandemic that seems to have, you know, it ebbs and flows up and down, but it never ends. I hope and pray that 2022 sees the end of this pandemic and life gets back to the new normal once and for all. However, I will say that we worked hard. And I know the board was actively involved this year as much as ever, whether we brought this to the table. We were aggressive in so many ways with infrastructure needs, our parks, our handicap, new playground and events. And we did, even though there was a pandemic, we did everything we could to make people have a sense of normalcy, to have a sense of community, to come out to our community age, our concerts in the park. We're going to continue to do that and do it better each year because we learn, every time we do something, we learn how to do it a little bit better. So we're excited to look at 2022. We feel we had a great 2021. We're looking forward to an even better 2022. I want to take a second. On behalf of all of our townspeople staff, I want to thank the board for all your support throughout the year, after your guidance and your professionalism and all you do. And you serve the residents of the township with integrity. We see that, we appreciate it, and we thank you. On behalf of, to my, to the entire staff of East Norton Township, every department has stepped up. From our Public Works, you know, they're out there in storms. They're out there on cold days, on hot days. Inside, when I need something done, when, you know, from this building to infrastructure, they save the township thousands of dollars a year because other townspeople have to go out and pay contractors to do it. We do it in houses because we have a talent staff led by Brett Stevens and our, one of our Cecil Beach Mill, Steven Spielberg, Tim Bradgarde in the back on the camera. We have, we've made tremendous gains. Our codes, our code fire guys have done tremendous work. Our engineering staff, Township Manager, Assistant Manager Jeff, Jeff Hornibody, and our finance department. Every day, finance is important to us because we know every, we take, we take it extremely serious where every penny is tax payer money. And that means a lot to us. I know it means a lot to the board. And understand and know and be assured that we take that very seriously every day. We don't spend a penny or we account for everything in the clearest and cleanest way because we want, we want people to have that trust and that guidance and that positivity that we are handling their tax monies well. We are good stewards and we will continue to be. And one other comment to our police department, always one of our shining examples of the work they do. We had a new member, our Deputy Chief came in, has done a fantastic job. Our chief always is, has led with true vision and really a progressive way of taking us to the next level. Outreach, community policing, community outreach. We are at an all-time high. Obviously, we're doing, we're taking, we're in a new kind of world. There are challenges that have grown, especially during the pandemic, that it's, we need new visions and new ideas. And the chief and Deputy Chief have led the way we just had a meeting today. That was fantastic. It was cutting edge. It was taking us to that next level of how we interact with our community and keep our community safe. So I want to thank them for all they do. And really thank, I don't want to miss anyone, but thank everyone, Jim Sullivan over there, everyone for what they do. And we are a true team, a true family here. And we are led by greats and great community services. And last, because I didn't want to miss it, Supervisor DeSanto just gave the nod. The township doesn't...
Whatever my name is.
The township, the township doesn't work without somebody that's getting us all where we need to be, when we need to be there. That's our administrative assistant and all around, all around boss, Morris Thomas, who makes things run every day and really gets it done. And we couldn't talk without her, and she knows that. So she's, you all know it, you all know that in everybody. So thank you for everything you do. We want to wish everyone a great, happy holiday, Merry Christmas. Whenever holidays and you celebrate, we wish you the best. We look forward to the great 2022. So thank you.
And, man, you got me a lot of feels over here. I know I speak for everybody when I say we're so grateful for you guys and you make this job so easy because you guys, I mean, it shows how much we work together